We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Today's date is February the 6th, 2023, and this is the Tell City Common Council. If everybody could please stand, and we'll recite the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You all may be seated. Before we adopt the agendas, I do have one addition. Under new business, item F, I apologize, I did leave this off. It's the ARP funds the committee met last week, week four last, something like that, I don't remember. And did approve three to consider. So I just want to add that under item F, ARP funds, please. And if there are no other additions to the agenda, I'm going to adjourn motion to approve. Got a motion made by John. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Phillip. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for our vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda stands approved. Next item is presentation of minutes for approval. We have three sets of minutes in here. We have January 3rd, January 17th, and we still have the ones from December 19th. Do you want to do them all at once or individual, counsel? Some of you were here, some of you weren't. Sometimes I know people abstaining that they weren't there. It's whatever you all want to do. Doesn't matter to me. I think Julie, you weren't at one of them.
I wasn't.
The 19th, I think, maybe? No, John wasn't at the 19th.
I wasn't at the January 3rd.
Yeah, and you can still approve them and vote in favor if you weren't here.
That issue came up, and I researched it.
The 19th was you, Phillip, I'm sorry.
You do not have to have been present at a meeting to approve minutes.
But it's you guys' minutes, it's your all's motions, you decide what motion you want to do. Indivisible, we're all together. Is that all right for everybody?
Transferring to me.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the January 3rd, January 17th, and December 19th minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Gary. Anybody second?
I'll second that.
Second by Phillip. Any further discussion?
I have one item, and it doesn't necessarily need to be corrected in the minutes, but I'd like it to be notated in tonight's minutes. The two people that commented at the December 19th meeting, they were not residents of the city. And when you read the minutes, it implies that they were residents of the city. Neither one of them are residents of the city of Tell City.
Okay.
I'd like that another take it in the minutes.
Okay. So motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion still? Hearing none, we'll call for our vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes stand approved. Next item on the agenda is comments of citizens. Are there any citizens that would like to make any comments? Please step up to the microphone and state your name and address, please, for the minutes.
Hi, Ambassador Serves. My name is Ron Ford. I live on 12th Street here in Tell City. But like the last meeting, you were just talking about the ARP meeting, the cameras. I don't know, I seem like we talked a lot about cameras. And then a couple days later, somebody doesn't burn out, and they say the cameras were on order, you know, for a couple of weeks already. I don't remember if you guys ordered them or okay or anything. Which that is really the point. I know we need cameras, I have cameras, all kinds of cameras, because of all the vandalism. I got 25 years as a factory, I have lots of friends, I got 13 years at Walmart here down on my shift. Vandalism is going on in Walmart in my shift and everything like that. So the cameras, good job, okay? Now, my concern here is I ask a lot of questions on my state ARP funds with this habitat for humanity. And what I want to do is ask if we don't find them, that we don't find them, I find them basically discriminating. And regionally, people, they don't help everybody. So their community, they don't really help everybody. And I can say that if there's a police officer with a cross training, okay? Would it say a young person who goes to law school, a lot of training, obviously put her life on the line? As long as he's single, he doesn't qualify for that, okay? For him to stay in this town, to have a relevant job, or anything like that, you know? Paying $700 a month rent, he needs help, okay? So I'm thinking a guy that's working, he went to school, he's established, he gets his bachelor's going on by his own company, okay? Sex scenario, even older people, and that's why I mentioned, you know, I'm over the fag, you're over 45 years. I work in the stockroom and receiving department out of the factory. I know hundreds of people, I follow them, I've heard every time I've been in the past. So if somebody is an old age, okay, 45, 48 years old, I'm not gonna say it, it was on my mind at that point. But they lose their wife, okay, the wife wants divorce, they get divorced, he loses his house, he loses his kids, he has to pay child support, he has to pay rent. He can't afford that, and this is a guy that definitely needs it. But this humanity will not, you know, they won't turn their back on him, okay? So I think that's very discriminating. I asked about making, you know, a studio apartment, you know, just for a single person, a common fee, so the young person can do it, so to retire, you know? The guy don't want to be able to retire, paying around child support, whatever. So even a third scenario, okay, the gay community, can they even marry any gay, I don't know.
You can marry, you can marry anywhere in the United States.
Okay.
Yep. Federal laws.
Okay.
Yep.
So, but anyway, really, they can't have kids, but they want to stay in school, educate themselves and everything, you know? They got their back turned, you know, the community turns their back on them too. I mean, there's the young people, the gay people, the old people, you know, just off the top of my head, okay? This habitat for humanity does not help them out, okay? Now, this doesn't help family out, doesn't even get divorced, okay? So really, you know, there's just such a high priority. But in my opinion, they also, they try to say they help the homeless, I think that's awful. In my opinion, I think that's awful, I think they're misleading, you know, because the people probably don't, the people have probably both got a job, they're getting all kinds of tax credits already, so the government's already helping them out. So here we are, you know, trying to help them out. And in that situation, I mean, they need real, they don't need land, you give them, you give them land, probably in this town, okay? I'm just gonna get into this, I'm gonna, I'm gonna check through what's going on in here, everything, that's why I try to follow these meetings every, every week and everything like that. But, you know, for the multiple reasons of the people that they are not, these are the people that need it the most. The people that have everything full away from them, and then older, or the police officer, you know, the monster now, he's put his life on the line, and that's that, you know? Those people need your word, and they're having, you know, they're struck by all the rules and regulations. So if you come to him, money to them, if they're coming to Tell City, I think you need to make the rules and regulations. I think you need to, I mean, really, all of you, to talk about and set it up. But that way, they need to meet your needs, Tell City's needs, where they, you know, they can put in an application for a need, you know? People put in an application for a need, or put in an application for a hardship, because I know, I've interviewed hundreds of people, where their hardships were. And I mean, because of hardships, no matter there's a guy hurt, but no matter if they're at Walmart or right now, 78 years old, you will never be able to retire because of his life being suspended and everything, you know? And so, I mean, he does have kids at 78 years old, but, you know, he still wouldn't be qualified for this kind of housing, you know? And I think it's sad that we won't hand it to somebody if we have really reasonable. So I know that this is going to be done, or, you know, if this meeting and everything.
Yeah, be item F on the agenda.
Yeah.
And there's some information that the clerk treasurer and myself received Friday, or was it today? Or was it over the weekend, maybe? Over the weekend. That kind of, we'll talk about the ARP funds and some things that it can and can't be used for.
I just had a quick concern, though. I kind of felt like the cameras were ordered under the building light, you know?
Well, no, they were, no, Ron, the cameras were ordered under the ARP, committee approved them and gave a favorable recommendation, I believe. And then it came before this council for the, for the purchase of them last year. It did, hmm? Both checks and balances. Yeah. It did. And it, so they were, they were approved. It's just backorder stuff and getting actually the company to come in and set up. And I, I think, Brandon, correct me if I'm wrong, is it next week, or when do they come in to set those up? They've already started now, okay?
They were at the ARP and Senate Council last year.
Yeah. Yeah. And we've got that kind of cleared up.
I gotta save you insurance and everything on some of the units and everything. I mean.
You never know if insurance, if it will or won't. I can't say it would, but it will save us hopefully on vandalism of our properties.
Before we go in and not charge someone's money for somebody that calls itself humanity or whatever, you know? Let's take a look and see how discriminating they are in handing this out. And I know there's probably two people here that I'll probably be able to get out of here, okay?
Okay. Well, we appreciate it, Ron. Thank you very much for your comments.
Just for my clarification, Connie, this $38,021 that we've incorporated for computer equipment, is that for the cameras?
No, it's not.
No, that was for like the server.
Certain, city hall purchases of computers.
So that's not collected on this sheet?
No, it was, those funds were already.
The camera?
Carried over.
I could, there you go. I could carry over those funds because we had a signed agreement with Astra to purchase them.
There you go.
Can you remember all how much that was?
Thank you, Brandon. All right, we're still in comments of citizens. Any other comments have any citizens? Josh? Just state your name and address for the minutes, we always ask everybody to do that.
Yeah, my name is Josh Harris. I'm a resident of the right wing, I'm a Republican, yeah.
Okay.
A lot of things you said today that were incorrect, I'll just address those. We do not discriminate on age, we do not discriminate against discrimination, we do not discriminate against sexual orientation, we do not discriminate. And some of the examples we did not, people who played at their bachelor home and not have difficulty, I don't even recognize a lot of those examples that's actually being made, that's actually applied. We do not discriminate, have difficulty, that has a great track. We were more respectful of our properties overall. And that's all I'll obviously say, we do not discriminate, we have a process, anybody, anybody.
Do you recall, it's habitat, it's Perry County Habitat for Humanity, but they've been located in Tell City of importance since 1996. So they've been a member of this community for over 25 years. Majority of the homes that habitat has built have been in Tell City. They've built, I think, a few homes in towns, but, so they've contributed greatly to this community over the last 25 years. They are affiliated with Habitat for Humanity International also, which is a well-respected international organization, so.
We do not discriminate against citizens, for all kinds of people, all races.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
If you could come up here, just so they can hear on the recordings.
Yeah, I don't want to help, I don't want to, you know, I don't want to help people, but you have to be married and have children, right?
No? Ron, if you get a chance, you might give Josh a call, and maybe you could, you know, ask him some questions.
I have all the questions.
Yeah.
The last meeting, okay, the ARP meeting, I had, you know, next to you, I have to hear, and you have to be heard, okay? That's my opinion, and then they would not have made a smaller house, you know, for like a single person, whether you're young, old, or whatever, you know, starting out, or finishing off, or anything like that. You know, I don't know, but I didn't have, why don't you ask, if we were all here, I asked a bunch of questions, and go by God, if you go by Jesus, and it doesn't matter how long they've been here, that's not the point, okay? I didn't want to say that you discriminate any more than, or we can come out, that's not the point.
Ron, we're just, I just, out of very respect for everyone's time, if, you know, if you get a chance, talk to Josh, I think he might be able to clarify, you know, get, reach out to him, he may be able to explain the process some more. And he might be able to answer the questions that we didn't quite understand or wasn't explained well enough to you. And it may, that could be my fault, so.
I don't need that, I mean, I live.
No, I understand.
I know people that are actually helping you, they would leave, if you have to be heard, you know?
Well, I know, they've built homes for people that are not married. I know that for a fact. I do know one lady. They have, and she lives on 9th Street there, it's a brand new home, she's actually in a wheelchair. They built that house to meet ADA standards for her because, you know, obviously, I know that as an example. And I don't think she would be upset if I explained that. But talk to Josh sometime, and they might help educate everyone about the process and who would qualify and who wouldn't. Or he could probably even get you a copy of the application for you to look at, and then it would really tell you that's what the application says. But just for clarity and just education, I know you had questions, you want to get them answered. So he could answer better than I could, because I. Sure.
That's why we're being, we're putting in there recovery, or?
It's, there's a multitude of things, but recovery is one of them. You know, you could say lost revenue or something like that, yeah. So, all right, any other comments of citizens? Thank you both for your comments, too, appreciate it. All right, committee and ward reports. We're gonna start first with Ward 1, Mr. Larry Kleeman.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. I attended the planning commission meeting on January the 12th. The main purpose of the meeting was reorganization. Matt Kao was elected president, Tim Reed vice president, I was appointed as secretary, and we have a new recording secretary. Doty Otto is now the recording secretary. Julie Dixon decided to step down from that position. Also attended the meeting, the ARP committee meeting on January 18th. Attended the new senior groundbreaking on January the 25th, where Gary and Connie and the mayor and I had an opportunity to take a sledgehammer and knock a couple holes in the wall out there.
Connie fixed the light. You hit it, and it went out, and she hit it, and it went back on.
It's great to see that project underway. I also attended the habitat dedication for a new house that they built, 944 Fourth Street, which is down by the levee. Attended that on January the 27th. With that, a new single parent moved in to her new home that she purchased. Attended the Perry County Development Operation Annual Meeting on January the 30th, which was a very interesting meeting. There was one thing that was stated at that meeting, which I had never really considered, which made a lot of sense to me. We talk about the need for housing, increased housing in this community. And I can't recall the exact dates, but David Goffman, who's the current chairman of the PCDC Board, gave a statistic where, we'll say, he said it's 20 years ago. I don't remember the exact dates, but the data that he reported is what brought something home to me, talking about homes. For instance, 20 years ago, the average household size in Tell City was, say, roughly three people, okay? It's, I don't know, 0.76 or something like that. Or today, the average household size is like one and a half, or 1.7 something, let's say it's one and a half. What that means is, just to stay even with your population, you have to create twice as many homes.
John Shears talked about that many times, and the need for homes, and I forgot his number, but it was a number that almost you thought was crazy, but when you think about what you're saying and what John's saying, it makes sense.
Exactly. Households have fewer members in them now, so you need more.
Correct. And single parents, for whatever reason, and.
That's the first time I ever heard it told that way. It makes a lot of sense.
Quality affordable housing is an issue.
It's not only, it's not only growth, but it's to maintain our current population.
Mm-hmm.
I also wanted to mention, and I followed up on these, I had two constituent requests during the past month for a new street light at the dead end cul-de-sac on Perry Parkway. Currently, there is no street light there, and it's very dark.
Okay. Have you?
I've talked with Superintendent X, I've talked with the mayor briefly about it.
Is that resident still want it?
Yes.
Last time we talked, he was gonna check on it, double, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
I talked to Andy, yeah, very much so.
So we can maybe get down to the next, has he even looked at it yet, or do you know?
I, I think he's getting some information together.
Okay, for the next ward of works.
I don't think he's been out there.
Okay.
The other request I had is for new larger street signs on Highway 66 at the intersection of William Tell Boulevard and Archer Hill Road. That's the intersection by McDonald's in the circle S. On the west side of 66 is Archer Hill Road. On the east side of 66 is William Tell Boulevard. The street signs that are there now, the one on Archer Hill is, I don't know if you can even see it, let alone read it.
Yeah.
From the intersection, and William Tell Boulevard is very small. What they explained to me, and I think it makes a lot of sense, it'd be nice, and I think this is probably an Endot request, if streets could go up, like they put on Washington Highway 66.
I think it's also on Tell Street. Man, I don't know, can't remember. I know it's on Washington, where you're at, yes. I do know that.
But, I mean, you know, we take it for granted, I mean.
We do.
You know, I turn at that intersection.
You probably didn't know there was a sign there, you turned out so much to.
I did. But I went down and looked at it. So anyway, I just wondered, there were almost two constituent requests, and both of them I found to be.
That street sign issue might be something to take to Pat and find out if he can speak to somebody at Endot. I don't know if it, Endot would have jurisdiction of signs in the right of way, but, but they'd probably ask us to provide the sign, and then they'd put it up. In fact, this is just me guessing.
Well, we are in the process of getting our sign maker set up for all new street signs in the whole city, and so we'll.
It's just the, what I was told is it just kind of surprised that they, when they did the paving, the repaving, they went beyond that.
They did.
But they did put up new signs, so I don't, I don't know, maybe.
Could be an oversight, or maybe they ordered the signs and somebody forgot to put.
A line item in a different budget, that's how, my past experience with Endot is it can be that simple, it's just a line item in a different budget.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ward 2, Julie?
I did attend the LEC meeting on January 23rd. Nothing related to report from it, and also attended the same plan commission that Larry was at, and he's already mentioned about the officers. That is all.
Okay, thank you. Ward 3, Phillip.
Uh, no report.
All right, moving down. Ward 4, Gary Morton.
We saw the waste, had a meeting again beginning of January. We had a problem with one of the buildings on site down there. It's used to store books, paper items and things like that, and we can sell them. And the building had a roof problem, needed a roof, and again, it had some concrete block, roof supports that had been damaged, so the roof was kind of sagging. So we got that jacked up and put additional supports on the roof, so the building is in good shape right now. Prices of commodities, again, that's one of our major sources of income there. Not much changes, cardboard, glass, tin, staying about the same, some weeks up, some weeks down, but no major increases or decreases. All the equipment there at the facility tends to be working well. The belt that we bought, conveyor type belt, that seems to be working, and they, what do you call it, compressing these things together.
Compactor.
Compactor, seems to be working well as well. Okay, I had a couple people tell me that they wish we could do something about the standing water there at the site. Again, this time of year, the area in front of the dumpsters, where people could unload their things, you get out of your car and you're waiting and monkey stuff. Again, we've dumped, we've dumped tons and tons of rock up there over the years, but again, the low boys and the equipment that runs back and forth across that kind of works it into the ground. And again, the water kind of stands up there, so I don't know if we could, once I got, one person told me, maybe we could concrete those, a pad area in front of those dumpsters, and people could get out on that, stay on the concrete without getting it all over the shoes and feet. But we did talk about that toward the end of the meeting, but nothing really happened with it, so again, that is a point of concern there. The area doesn't drain very well, obviously, right there, it's a flood plain, it just doesn't drain well. That's about all.
Okay, thank you, Gary. John Little, councilman at large. Any statements from the city attorney or clerk treasurer?
I would like to mention, I'm sorry I missed the plan commission on the 12th, I was at the funeral home. I did get the updates, I want to thank Doty for stepping up and taking on the role of recording secretary. That's, that's the backbone, that's who does all the work. And thank Julie Dixon for helping, she's gonna continue to train Doty a little bit, so she's not just leaving her hanging on that.
Yeah. They were on the phone today, talking about stuff, so, great. And anything from Connie?
No.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, the agenda. Under owed business, we don't have anything, so we'll move straight down to new business. Lawn mow, discussion. We have the Parks and Rec Director Brendan Long to discuss that.
So what I would like to do, is to, you know, you've got a lot of new orders, and you had $16,000 from our school contract, and this is number six, so. So I would like to ask guys to re-prepare the $19,000, and then, um, I'll just ask to help our project, so we'll go to, uh, and, uh, 72, I think this is, you know. I have a, I have a, I have a, I have a, we look into it to decrease the, for our, uh, what are your statistics? So, I would like to, uh, do a part of maintenance, uh, I would like to maintain a little bit of that.
Okay. Counsel, do you have any questions for Brandon regarding that? Connie, that's something that has to be advertised, correct?
Correct. If this is something that Brandon is needing to go ahead and get secured, so that he does get the type of wars that he's wanting, we could do, the council could choose to do a motion of intent that they would approve this $19,000 at their next meeting, because I do have to advertise it first.
Yeah.
But you can do a motion of intent, that you would approve it at the March meeting.
You couldn't get it until next Mondays anyways, probably, could you? You'd really have to get on it to get it even for Thursdays.
It's gonna be very close.
Yeah, so Monday makes more sense, okay. Counsel, what kind of questions do you have for Brandon regarding this?
I've never heard crickets from you guys before. I'm out of act. If I'm understanding correctly, it's existing funds is basically what it is. It's not a request for appropriation of new funds. It's funds that were just simply not appropriated at the.
Well, the $16,000 that comes for our parks from the school contract goes back into those parks to help maintain.
Exactly.
A lot of those, not all of them, obviously, you know. A lot of those, not all of them, obviously, you know, that more will be used at other properties besides that. But the fields, there's two baseball fields and a practice football field and maybe some smaller other things and a little bit of that that would be used towards it. So it's going back into the maintenance of it. It's not like it's been used on something that's not totally related to those, those fields in any way or properties. So that's good. And what was the other amount you said? I missed it.
Three thousand.
Three thousand was left over from last year's budget?
Yes.
Got it, sorry.
Exactly.
It's all within our budgets.
Yeah, we've discussed this before, right?
Yeah.
With manpower, um, time savings.
Well, you've done it, he did, and I don't remember the, the total outcome of it all. You did do a time study at one point on a lot of it. And I understand that too. So counsel, I'm looking for any motions that either for or against, or?
I'll make a motion of intent to, um, reappropriate the nineteen thousand to the, however that needs to be recorded.
Parks and Rec's budget.
Parks and Rec budget.
Okay, we have a motion made by Larry. Is there a second? Seconded by Julie. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, thank you, Brandon. Sure, sure, if you want, yeah. Now, I do hope we, at the ARP. I do hope something that the ARP committee, which I'm on, and the council considers in the future is some Wi-Fi in our parks. Uh, that was an intention of ARP funds national, I think, when it came out to help with, cause not everybody can afford internet. Let's just be honest. There, it, everybody can afford it. It's not cheap. Most people have to rely on their cell phones for their mobile data. I get that. Um, so people, you know, even out in the county, it's, PSC's done a great job in getting it to them and still affording it. So having that as an option for, especially with schools with a lot of e-learning now. Some people have Wi-Fi at their home and they can't, if they can't log into school for their e-learning or whatever, they miss out on that. And that's, that's, we need to work on that, I think. At least City Hall Park, maybe. I know during COVID, we had City Hall Park and the depot, and the library had options. And I'd hoped Sunset Park would be a good place and maybe City Hall Park. And even out the swimming pool would be, or that area will be a good spot. Cause that's kind of three different spots in the town that gives an option.
And we would start small. Uh, the, the, uh, to make you go from bathrooms, that's not a part of the, the other.
Yeah. We can bring it in, sure. And that's, that gives people options. And even Castle Park would be a nice option, cause that, again, that's a whole nother neighborhood by the school. You know, and I think it'd be important to do it. I know that's not on the agenda, but I just, I hope they consider it and look into that in the future. Well, we got item F as ARP funds. We're going to talk about that during it. That's part of it, right?
Well, it was added to the agenda.
It was added to the agenda. Yeah, it was item F. I forgot. I, well, Nathan wanted to be last, but sorry, Nathan, Brandon. It's me, I, hey, I told, it totally slipped my mind and I apologize. All right, thank you, Brandon. Get this camera reset here, all right. Additional appropriations, item B under new business. Counsel, what this is, if you look just, the main ones are going to be your ARP coronavirus local physical recovery fund. You'll notice that these are some things that the council allocated last year, but didn't get spent and we didn't have any, we'll call invoices or whatever you want to call it, to carry it over. So it's under, if the council, which ones, if any or all, that they want to put towards, uh, reappropriating this year's of the ARP funds. The, you know, you can see like there's a nonprofit, small business. We allocated a hundred and fifty thousand? And you can see only a hundred and twenty-nine five is left of that. You can decide to keep that or take it out. The consulting.
They will need to keep, if they choose to change it in any way. I do need to keep twenty-three thousand two hundred dollars in there for the ARP application that we did pay this year already.
The consulting services, I don't think I would reduce that just because that's with Baker Tilly. That's helped us a lot with our, um, is fifteen thousand, I think?
It was fifteen or sixteen thousand, and this is what's left.
The website update, JFK pool expenses, which.
So we've, uh, so we've spent thirteen thousand dollars with Baker Tilly.
Yes.
To this point in time.
Correct. The pool update for the, the Tell City website, we're still working on that. That, I mean, you guys are, you're in charge, this is your money, I'm just explaining it. JFK pool expenses, we've got twenty-five left in there. Our hope is to put, if you remember that awning, that was at Sonic, that the developer of that site for the cars donated to the city and we had it disassembled. We're going to have that reassembled to put up over where you would call the, where the kiddie pool used to be. It's just a concrete pad there now. That'd provide shade. There's literally, I'm not sure, sitting at a table with our brother, there's no shade. And if you're a grandparent, if your kid, grandkids out there, or a parent or whoever, you want some shade sometimes. And that'd provide that shelter for them, so we did allocate that. The city hall downstairs restrooms, we actually just received, um, a bid that came in very close to the fifteen thousand. It's a little bit over, if you don't count the door part, to make those ADA accessible. We got three quotes on that one, actually. We got one that came in finally close to where we wanted it. Wendy Creek improvements, we're still working on. Joe Schaefer Park, Castle Park some, uh, we allocated a hundred and seventy-five thousand towards it. Parks Director and I have been working on that. We're ready to basically hit submit and order on that. Prices came in really good. Uh, we're looking at using about a hundred and fifty thousand of it for the equipment itself. Twenty-five thousand would go towards any mulch, uh, other expenses, the sidewalks to go up to it. The leadership Perry County class, it's my understanding that they're going to take on as a project to construct a shelter house there maybe, so that helps frees up a little money where we can get some extra equipment. Um, the dog park, Brandon's been working with a lot of people that attend the dog park and he's got some ideas as far as some features that they would like to see. I don't have a dog, so don't ask me what a dog would like to see. But they came up with some neat, like a water feature. Again, I don't have dogs, so.
If you cut out the dog park, you would have a room full of.
Yeah, no, no, I wouldn't. I wouldn't recommend it. The pickleball courts from Haggenham Park, we know we approved that. That's going to put that surface on it. That will help with it. Restroom improvements in the park department, that's kind of a little bit ongoing. Last year, they done a lot of painting in them and they're still working on them. Beautification committee, uh, forty-seven hundred dollars. Um, they do have some projects that ties into what used to be called Brick by Brick, which is now Tell City Strong, which is the downtown group that we're redoing. They've got some banners and other stuff that they're wanting to do. Wastewater extension is Forest Canton, right out of Crowe Hospital. Um, that's a project that's moving along very fast and I think it's going to get going very soon. John Shear and the redevelopment commission's working on. Computer equipment, we did ask about that. Part of that's for our server that hasn't been taken out. That'd take a big chunk of that out, won't it?
No, the server is already paid for.
Really?
Yes. Is this, is this will be any computer equipment, any kind of updates or anything that we need between now and twenty-twenty-six, basically?
Okay. Sports complex, five hundred thousand. As you know, that's something moving on. We're trying to still break ground, um, this summer with that. And then the leaver for the street department, that was something that was approved pretty much right at the end.
Of course.
So that's why it hasn't been purchased yet. So any questions regarding these? I just, and the other one's up step above. I'm going to have to let Connie explain those a little better. I just.
On the point for the police department on their, uh, Taser gun lease, it has been discovered that the last two years we were not paying the correct amount on the Taser lease. So we, we still owe them additional twenty-three hundred dollars. And they do have that in a little, a public safety fund to pay back. And they'll, the local road bridge matching grant, this is for our community crossings, round two from twenty-twenty-two. Once that we just, uh, accepted bids on.
Last meeting.
At the last meeting. And this is the total amount that that bid come in.
And that's paving that will, has to be completed by June fifteenth of this year. We just applied again for close to that same amount. Um, not too far from it, uh, the end of January. So we hope to hear from that in April or so. We're not sure of the exact date. So any questions on any of these additional appropriations or any that you do not want to carry over?
I, I would like to. I would like to add my motion, Chris, if I may.
Okay.
If we're ready for it.
Sure?
I would make a motion to approve what has been presented to us, with the exception of the, under the ARP, um, the nonprofit and small business. I would like to see that reduced to twenty-three thousand two hundred, which will free up a hundred and six thousand three hundred, um, for general uses of the city. If I'm correct on that, Connie, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
That's my motion.
Okay. We have a motion made by Larry. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by John. Any further discussion?
What is it, what do you mean by general uses? Do we still have to reappropriate it?
What do you mean general uses?
When, it would go into the general fund and then if you wanted to use it.
I guess I should.
Stay in the RFF.
It stays, so basically, at the last ARP committee, I think we had, after what we've kind of allocated and like promised, but gave favorable recommendations, we have like maybe forty or fifty thousand or thirty, it wasn't a lot. So now that money go back in that. So now, rather than having that thirty or forty, fifty, you'd have one thirty, one forty, one fifty. I don't remember.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Lot of, lot of discussions, so. And then any of the others that you may or may not approve tonight would go back into that, that pot for reappropriation to something else. So by Larry's motion, by doing that.
Cameras, Wi-Fi, parks, whatever.
Yeah, whatever recommendations come before the ARP committee or to the, to the council, or, you know, however you want to do it, so. Motion made by Larry.
Does small business still apply for any of this?
They, they would not be able to apply at this point. We've, we've opened that up and we had so many apply and we actually paid Baker Tilly to come down. And we told anybody that's applying should attend that meeting. We recorded it, put it online for small businesses, so they would know how to fill the application out and include every document we asked for. Um, we done everything we could do to help them and some chose not to, for whatever reason, didn't have enough documentation they're supposed to have in there, so they got denied for that reason.
We did not open that back up?
We did not open that back up. We just, we felt it wasn't, I felt it wasn't right to open back up since we offered, we paid Baker Tilly literally several thousand dollars to come down here and do that presentation. And I can't help it that they didn't put that in their application. That's not my fault. We literally done everything we could do for them.
Most of, I, I don't know, I've not seen the invoices, but I suspect most of the consulting time that we paid Baker Tilly for, um, was for the nonprofit and small business.
I would say seventy-five percent easy.
Okay.
Easy, yeah.
So we've spent, and I think you said we've spent roughly thirteen thousand dollars for Baker Tilly?
We've spent the majority of it.
If, uh, if seventy-five percent of that.
Ten thousand or so, I bet at least.
Then we spent ten thousand dollars for forty-seven thousand dollars worth of grants.
Yeah, you could say that. But we had it up to that, a hundred and fifty, I think, we did allocate originally, but.
Well, no, but, Chris, I mean, what we spent though, I mean, we spent ten thousand administrative funds to the park, forty thousand grants, I, that, that doesn't seem very effective to me, so.
Well, we would have awarded more, but some were, they had to filter through them and you could count, if you want to count those, yeah. Yeah.
What's the normal fee percentage for like a grant? Is it like ten percent or?
Well, they charged us one percent of what was awarded, which was one point six and some change. So that's how much we allocated roughly for their services. And we'll still need their services on stuff, you know. Um, we had an email with them, which we'll talk about later under the ARP part of the, um, agenda, where they came back with some, you know, there was some questions asked to them and they answered them, you know, and whether you agree or disagree with them, they did give us how, what the rules state. So, I mean, I, again, that's, we hired them because I would like to think that they are the professionals and they know it, they're better than I do, and hopefully they keep us out of trouble. That's, that's the goal. I mean, they better. We'd be pretty upset with them. So we had a motion made by Larry. Is there a second on that motion? Oh, John second, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right. Transfers. Resolution twenty, twenty-three dash one, resolution by the Tell City Common Council to make necessary transfer between classifications within several budgets. Transfer of cash for city match on community crossings grants. This is what Connie was kind of talking about earlier, right? Or is this the new one? No, this is, yeah, this is the one she was just talking about. So MVH Motor Vehicle Highway Fund, transfer from, um, twenty-twenty-two zero one zero zero one, three six three dot zero zero, motor vehicle highway street alley maintenance, thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars and eighty-eight cents to fund twenty-four oh three local road bridge match grant fund. Motor vehicle highway restricted fund, I'm not going to read the fund number, that bores people. From round two, twenty-twenty-two, a hundred and fifty thousand to local road and bridge, uh, matching fund. Adopted the sixth day of February twenty-twenty-three. Is there any questions regarding this resolution? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, or is there a motion? Sorry. Who wants to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Gary, is there a second? Seconded by Larry. Um, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I was just seeing if everybody was paying attention. All right.
Connie, just a question, will you work out the twenty-five?
Yes, I know, I, I just didn't do that yet, but I will.
Moving on to item D, two-year outstanding warrants. So, um, basically in a nutshell, if we would issue someone a check for either, uh, general fund, which there were none, trash department, which were none, in this case, water department, there was a warranty, uh, warrant check, uh, ninety-one forty-four for seventeen hundred dollars and some change. That was under the water department. Uh, under the wastewater department, warrant ninety-five seventeen, and that was over five thousand and just some small change there. And then Tell City Electric Department had several of them, um, fifty-eight dollars, a three dollar, seventeen, two dollar, one dollar, twenty-five, twenty-five, and an eighteen for a total, a hundred and fifty-one dollars and seventy-two cents. Basically, these are checks we issued people two years ago that they, for whatever reason, decided not to cash or didn't, didn't need the money or want it. So those checks will be voided and those monies will be deposited back in their original funds. And these were from twenty-twenty-two, no, it was twenty-twenty for twenty-twenty-two. Yeah. There's too many twos in there. Uh, any questions regarding this? And some of these are commercial businesses, some are residential's. So there's a mix. If you want to see a full list of actually the names that's not on here of the individuals, you can, if you want. Connie's got the list. If there are no questions, I intend a motion to approve. Motion made by John, is there a second? Seconded by Larry. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, item E, we have Nathan Held of Indiana Region Fifteen Plan Commission. Uh, I'll let Nathan come on up and give his presentation. Thank you.
Nathan Held of Indiana Region Fifteen. I know Leah Hawkins was here before Christmas to go over our structure. Primarily, I'm here as, in my role as a director to be interested in myself. I've been around seven years, I've worked on a number of projects in the city. So really, that's all I'm doing. I make my rounds to all of our communities since I'm sixteen years. And we'll have any needs, we're helping you, supporting you. And we're working with you on a few projects. You're a good person, but if you have any other needs, please.
Nathan and Region Fifteen and Lisa and all of them, and Leah, have been a great partner with Tel City over the years. Most recently, they helped us a lot with the hospital grant, which we're still planning to go back in for that, but we'll see. Also, they helped us with our comprehensive plan. That's a grant Region Fifteen helped us with. The pier project that we're doing when Secretary Buttigieg came in, that was a grant that Region Fifteen helped us with as well. Children, I'm missing, that's really, there's one I'm missing. Yeah, there's a bunch, yeah, there's a lot going on. But those are some current ones that they've helped us with. The swimming pool, the one through the land conservation, there you go. It's a title I don't use a lot.
I was about to say, have it on fire.
Yeah. So that was another one that we just wrapped up last year. So they've been very good partners and they're, it's a great that we have them around to help us. And so, do you have any questions for Nathan or Region Fifteen?
Nathan, where is your home office? At what county is it in?
It's on First Street. Turn right. I know how to get there. I've been there many times. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nathan.
Thank you.
Moving on to our new business, item F, which is added, is ARP funds. Connie's got those numbers for you. We'll talk about them one at a time, I guess, if it would be best.
These were ARP funds approved at the January eighteenth, twenty twenty-three ARP advisory meeting, and they were now forwarded to the city council. The first one was seventy-five thousand to Tel City Rite and Shipp School Corporation for a school bus for after-school activities.
Okay. We'll, we'll kind of just talk about them one at a time and then as we go through them. That's why you don't read them off. There's two others, three others, I think. So seventy-five thousand would go towards the Tel City, seventy-five thousand go towards the Tel City School Corporation for an activity bus. They originally asked for, I believe, a hundred. We kind of unsettled on seventy-five for right now. The county ARP did give a hundred thousand, I believe, for the activity bus. Still, the school was originally, I believe, if we'd have given a hundred, if we'd have given a hundred, the county given a hundred, I think there was like thirty-three thousand or thirty-something thousand the school had to give in. We're going to see if the school can kind of come up with the rest. They can't. We told them to come back to us and we'll see what we've got left to do. But that night, we had a lot of requests on our, and we don't have a lot of money left. So we're like, we give all that and have nothing left? We just didn't know. So I think we were trying to be a little conservative that night. Is there any questions regarding that bus? If no one's, I wish I'd have brought the picture. Does anybody know what I'm talking about? Any ideas? I mean, if you've heard.
How many would, would they give seat?
God. Activity is about half the size of the regular.
Seat, forty.
They can work a sixty-passenger school bus to, they take the bench seats out and then they put in forty captain's chairs. It's converted to.
It'd have a Greyhound bus kind of look, but actual, it's a real, it's an actual school bus that's converted. And it will have storage underneath it.
Have storage underneath it, which is one of the major problems I have when they send teams, especially the football team.
And banned.
And banned is, they have.
Well, banned, they have it on a trailer.
They have to pack their gear.
This would eliminate at least some of those trips.
Interviews for boys and girls. It's not just, everybody thinks it's like boys' football or something. No, it's all the sports.
And banned.
And banned. It'd be all decorated out and have Tel City marksman on it and everything. So like the times you see other communities have these buses. And it's also a pride thing and it's a, it's a marketing tool for our community as well, too.
I think it's also improves safety with the transportation of our students.
Yeah. So any other questions on it?
Well, my question is that obviously there's going to be times when you've got two or three groups that might want the vehicle at the same time. What determines who gets to use it and doesn't?
Athletic director or the principal of the school, not me. Not us. We'll put Gary in charge of it and let you do it.
No, 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 no one, I don't want that.
They'll draw stock, they'll, they'll draw.
Once they've got the bus, it's the school's bus.
Yeah.
I know, but I'm just saying, what, what criteria determines, okay, these guys want it and these ladies want it? Who gets the bus?
We didn't ask that. I hope.
I guess the school board would have.
I wouldn't let, I wouldn't get hung up on that.
Responsibility to citizens so they could.
I would assume it's going to be, the decision's going to be based upon which use is going to provide the most savings. If, I mean, I'd just have to guess if there's a.
Distance and so forth.
A football game and, and some other athletic event at the same time, football teams probably going to get it because of the savings with the storage and everything, so they don't have to take multiple.
I'm just saying, I hope that they establish the guidelines because that's going to happen.
They will.
That's going to happen.
And that's why I suspect, like most things, the bottom line is going to be the guideline.
I did run this by Chris with Baker Tilly this morning. He came back and said this is an eligible expense. So I just, we did, that's when you say, the consulting money that we put towards them, did it go towards all the other, you know, the small business nonprofits? They went towards stuff like this, asking those kinds of questions for their research and their expert opinions. And I figured it was because the county had already proved it, but I'm just doing my due diligence and checking it off. So.
Is there any private donations?
No, no. The county gave a hundred. We're, we're recommending seventy-five. The school would be responsible for the remaining balance. They may ask for some private donations. I don't know. That would be up to the school, what they want to do. They needed, I mean, they're, they're short still, but I think they can come up with it. And if not, I told them to come back. So we'll see. They may be back, they may not, but it's their, their choice. So is there any motions on this one?
I'll make a motion to accept, to approve that.
Okay. We have a motion made by John. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Do you want it as a motion of intent that you will approve it at your next meeting when I advertise it as an additional appropriation?
That's why I told you.
That's what, that's what it would happen.
So they're making a motion on it anyway?
That's what I told him to do. I'm just kidding. No, I'm just.
That would be the appropriate process.
But first off, who's, who, we got John made the motion. Who's going to take the second? Larry and Gary both did it at the same time. Is it Gary? All right. So motion made by John, seconded by Gary. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right. Connie, get her notes. Next one.
And the next item on here is fifty thousand for Habitat for Humanity. And that's going to go towards a home that is currently in the process of being built, not the street.
Okay. So I do have a, we have a hiccup with this one. So Kelly did reach out to Baker Tilly. Chris is the guy that's been helping, Chris Brunner with Baker Tilly. She proposed a question to them, asking if this was an allocated expense. I'm trying to find.
It's at the bottom of the second page.
Yes.
Her question.
Yeah, her question.
And then his answer is at the bottom.
I'll just read Kelly's question and then I'll read Baker Tilly's answer. So everybody's clear. And Kelly's the chairman of the committee, so that's why she did reach out. "I have a quick question for you regarding the Tel City ARP funds for the purpose of donating to a local nonprofit organization. Habitat for Humanity is a local nonprofit who made a request for fifty thousand dollars in ARP funding to be used for a future house that they intend to build. Does this qualify as an allowable expense using city ARP funds? And if so, what is required of them to show that the funds were utilized for this purpose? Generally, the city government does not issue funds to local nonprofits for this purpose, so I wasn't sure if it would be allowable or not." Now, Chris's response was, "I hope all is well. The city's allocation can be considered revenue replacement in its entirety. Funds can be expended, the funds for any purpose that the city would legally be able to spend its old funds on. Since you mentioned the city does not issue funds to local nonprofits for that purpose, it would be an ineligible expense for ARP funds." It wouldn't be an eligible expense, sorry. Additionally, donations would be not to be considered ineligible use of ARP funds as a matter of regulation." And then he refers to some code in here. "This allows funding, contributions, or donations. The city could partner with Habitat for Humanity in some other capacities, such as issuing grants to offset costs to low-income families for construction of houses. Let me know if you have any questions. Thank you, Chris." So I, I'll let you guys discuss this.
Well, I'm going to speak, speak to, real quick.
So.
Because I'm the one that brought it up to be in. First of all, the email that Kelly sent said for the purpose of donating funds to Habitat, that is not the purpose. That misrepresents what we are doing, are proposing. We're proposing exactly what he said. The city could partner with Habitat for Humanity, such as issuing grants to offset.